...here today, please turn your cellphone off or to vibrate during the session. Thank you. Item three, approval of minutes.
Public comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Raiper.
Jake Raiper, Director of RMA. I just wanted to welcome the Planning Commissions to your first official meeting here at the Board Chambers. I believe this is a positive move for both the Planning Commission and also for the public to have this type of setting to hear a really important land use decision. So, I just wanted to say welcome up here and as we go through the process, if we have any little glitches, we'll get them worked out. We have IT support that's supposed to be assisting us. And so, as we go further along next budget year, we're hoping to utilize all of the systems that the Board has, and that's the audio minutes and just a whole bunch of additional things that makes the Planning Commission Secretary's jobs a lot easier and more efficient. And so, we're hoping that the budget will come through and we'll be able to do that. But I think this is a great setting specifically for all the controversial projects that we will be having. Maybe not controversial, but very, very...
Challenging.
Pardon me?
Challenging.
Very challenging, but also very, very important because these decisions that are coming up are going to be long-lasting for the county. The general plan is coming up this budget year, and so I'm sure we'll have some very large crowds to speak either in favor of or asking for changes or challenging or whatever the case may be. But I think this is a good forum and a good setting to conduct those types of hearings. So, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And I should note for my fellow Commissioners that the dates for the two meeting minutes are incorrect. They should be corrected to February 9th, 2011, and February 24th, 2011. So, let's take one at a time. And by the way, we don't have counsel here yet, so I'm not sure...
We're okay on this part.
Pardon?
We're okay on this part.
Okay. So, let's take one at a time. Could I have a motion on approval of minutes for the February 9th, 2011 session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Abstain?
Latch?
Yes.
Eliana?
Abstain.
Harmon?
Yes.
On the matter of meeting minutes for February 24th, 2011, may I have a motion for approval?
You'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes.
Latch?
Yes.
Eliana?
Yes.
Harmon?
Abstain.
Moving on to item four, consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar this morning. Let's jump down real quick to... We have some time. Let's jump down to item six, no timed items. Item seven, correspondence, general information. Jake, or sorry, Ben, are there any correspondence items?
Chairman, there are no correspondence items.
All right. Let's move to item eight. The Director's Report, summary of Board of Supervisors' meetings for February 15th, 8th, March 8th, March 15th, and March 22nd.
Chairman, with one request, that I have another chance at the end of the meeting to share the part two of the... But as far as the Board of Supervisors' meetings go, February 15th, we had no planning items to speak of or to report. March 8th, we did have a number of items worth bringing to your attention. One was the approval of Track Map 810, which was six lots in an RA 100 zone east of Tulare. The Planning Commission had recommended approval of this subdivision, and it was approved at that meeting. There was also a final EIR for the Santa Fe Bike Path. This item had, there was a number of concerns raised at the board meeting regarding this item by adjacent farmers who had concerns with people using the path and that interrupting or conflicting with their ag operations in that area. That one was tabled to be considered later, if I remember right. We did present on March 8th also an ordinance abolishing the Site Plan Review Committee and an ordinance abolishing the Zoning Administrator. It was tabled to March 22nd where it was heard yesterday, and the first reading was approved for those ordinances. So, the first step in that process, formal step, is underway. As far as that goes, this will be brought back to the Board of Supervisors on April 5th. If approved, it will go into effect 45 days later. And so, we're looking towards the end of June for that to really be in effect. What we're kind of telling people is the end of the fiscal year. July 1st is about the... Getting to see some of these items that were previously viewed by the Site Plan Review Committee and Zoning Administrator come to this Board, this body, this commission.
Are you going to replace this with some kind of informal review of, you know, with the applicant?
Yes, that was part of it, and that was brought up in the meeting yesterday. We had an interim plan until the ordinance is all settled. Our interim plan is the formation of a project review committee. And that committee will meet weekly. It will be made up of representatives from each department in RMA that are affected by development. And we'll meet with the applicants on each project, and we'll give them feedback verbally and in writing. And we'll also have a chance to informally discuss it and iron out issues and explain things and answer questions and hopefully resolve a lot of potential problems well in advance of the project. The applicants will then be instructed to formally file their project and get it processed, but with less complication. So, they will have gone through this process.
It seems like our projects are a little bit bigger in that we have a lot of other outside agencies that will be responding. So, I suppose those informal meetings are, they're going to have to take the luck of the draw when it comes to, say, water, sewer services, Caltrans, some of those outside... But you're probably going to warn them that they should get some kind of comment before they go too far, right?
Yeah, at that stage, the best we could do would be to inform them that there may be an issue with Caltrans or whatever the agency is and that will, and give them an early look at what that issue might be.
Fish and game.
But we won't have, we won't have the luxury of being able to have that agency's formal comments submitted.
Sure.
Won't know all of their issues right now.
I think just so people know where to go, it'd be great if you had like a checklist of...
Yeah, we intend to have, it will be a standardized letter that we send following the meeting. The letter would have a list of everything that was discussed at the meeting, potential issues listed out, as well as proposed conditions, at least tentatively, so they can see, you know, if I build this subdivision, I'm going to have to install all these improvements. They would have an early idea. And then, you know, the idea is if they have a project that's really going to be problematic or expensive, before we've identified all these things, before they've gone through a great deal of expense preparing for it, and maybe they don't want to... That would be a positive outcome if we avoided someone spending all this money for a project they can't really do, so... But the idea is to give them all that information upfront, including the conditions.
I think it'd be great if you could have a checklist of who do you call a fish and game, who do you call a Caltrans?
Contact list of people. Hey, are there questions on the...
I had a question about the abolishing of the two site, you know, the Site Plan Review and the Zoning Administrator. Is that partly a response to the economy we're in right now? Or is it because if business was usual, would we still need those two functions?
I believe that the biggest driving force and the nature of the business we're in, we've been forced to look at things critically for ways to improve efficiency, not just in the processing of the projects, but also in our staff resources and how to do things more efficiently there.
But when the economy comes back, what's Plan B on that?
Well, what we've seen is we've taken a look at the cities and how they've handled this during the boom. And what we're doing is we're mimicking their processes to some degree. And with the combination of a pre-application meeting and sorting out all these problems, we're able to address projects better and more efficiently and faster. And the hope, and what we've seen at the cities, is that when these projects do come before the Planning Commission, most of these problems are worked out. Some projects that we've had here have been debated at great length. There've been controversial issues, there've been a lot of neighbors. A lot of those things could have been worked out earlier if we had some... And when I, I worked at the City of Santa Maria during the boom times, we, our Planning Commission meetings went very quickly. We had a very high number of projects go through the Planning Commission during the real estate boom. And because of these pre-meetings where we're able to resolve things, the actual Planning Commission hearings were very smooth. It was really, by that point, just a chance to hear public testimony and see what they had to say. But all of the other questions and issues have been worked out, and that we were able to handle that high volume with a system like that. Today, without that pre-application meeting, bringing all these items to you would be potentially burdensome when things pick up again. At that time, we also have the option of re-looking at if we really do need to go back to having a Site Plan Review Committee or a Zoning Administrator. But it's not really anticipated that we'll need to. This, we think this will be an efficient way of doing business, especially when we use a consent calendar to handle a lot of the minor projects such as parcel maps. And so, I think it'll work out really well even during a busy time.
And if I may speak to that just briefly, not only the economy, but also the process in itself. I've always expressed a concern, and I think County Council has expressed a concern, is having staff as a, basically, a decision-making body, especially the zoning administrator. It's a good tool, however, in my mind, if one person makes a decision, such as denying a church or something of this nature, the appeal doesn't go to the Planning Commission, it goes directly to the Board. And my objective is really to have the Planning Commission as a diverse body hearing those kinds of land use decisions rather than a staff person. And also, the Site Plan Review Committee, I don't remember if the Planning Commission recalls, but I know you expressed some concern about having the process fragmented. And the Site Plan Review Committee would approve a portion of it, the Planning Commission had no ability to receive that information and have some decision-making authority on it, but you only had a portion of the project you could act upon. And in my mind, that's dysfunctional, and it doesn't really do the project justice in terms of the Planning Commission review and interaction with the public. And so, the other concept that we wanted to do is really have the Planning Commission as the hearing body on all these decisions, land use decisions. And as Mr. Kimball indicated, is that many jurisdictions, if, say, for parcel maps, we have a number of parcel maps on there, and they're very routine, no one has any objections to them, and the applicants are satisfied with the condition. What you do is put it on a public hearing process, you open up the public hearing, saying you're going to consider all these items at one time unless somebody wishes to pull the item for discussion. And if somebody wishes to pull one of the items, you can take action on the rest of them, one motion as recommended by staff. And so, that'll help expedite your hearing process, give folks an opportunity to have the interaction in the public forum on that kind of process. And so, that was one of the other reasons why we wanted to go in this direction. So, that's my two cents for the responding to that question.
But also, it saves a lot of time when I put my developer hat on. Basically, I can take the project to the city, and they tell me what I have to do. Or if the project's so ridiculous that if they're all laughing on the other side of the table, I say, "Well, why waste any money on this?" And they never do that. But it's a good process. It speeds it up.
I think it's been quite effective for the city's processes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add one more thing, there will be a parallel process to look at certain uses and processes that can be switched to an administrative approval as part of this. And two of them we're looking at now, and you should see before you in the way of an ordinance soon, is a non-commercial dog kennel and a staging area for equipment on public works road projects. Currently, if our, Britt Fussell's doing a road project here in the county, say, the Road 80 widening, he needs to park his equipment off the side of the road and have a staging area. He's got to go through a lengthy use permit process, which seems unnecessary. And so, we're going to look at all these things. And so, some of the things that currently would have to come to the Site Plan Review Committee or the Planning Commission, we're going to switch over to administrative, administrative approval. And that'll also help. We're looking at every piece of this puzzle to see how we might make it better and more streamlined.
Ben, may I ask a question? Who's going to be running, monitoring the pre-application meeting?
Well, I believe the current Site Plan Review Committee Chairperson would switch over and be the Chairperson of the Project Review Committee in the same capacity the Chairman operates in the...
So, that person's going to need to be pretty experienced to have quite a bit of review expertise to know if there's going to be an issue in one particular area, say, with the Caltrans or fish and game or something like that, or what?
Yes, but also, the, each project will be assigned to a project planner, the same way it's done now. That planner will be doing the same work that they're doing now as far as analyzing the project and identifying these things. The planners always have to go through that checklist, and that's not going to change. They will, what will change is when in the process they're doing it. Now, instead of doing it after a person's paid all this money, has gone through all these, they're sitting down and they're starting to analyze the project and do the environmental reviews, they're doing it at the very beginning of the process before that meeting starts. So, it'll be the same people working on it, looking at the same things, just a different point.
Are we going to be doing a lot of work before we get paid?
That's being debated now. The issues come up whether or not we should charge a fee for this project review committee meeting. Staff originally recommended a fee of a certain amount. It was debated at the Board of Supervisors a number of months ago. In this last effort on March 8th, that was brought up again, and some of the supervisors expressed a desire to not have a fee in order to make it be a convenience to the business community. But that debate really hasn't played out yet. It'll probably be formally decided during the normal fee schedule review by the Board of Supervisors each year.
More good projects, and if you process more good projects, you make more money because they go all the way through the process. And then, you get less projects appealed because, you know, they can appeal the zoning administrator's decision. I think it's much more supportive of our staff because it comes from us, not a, you know, I'm not, I really appreciate what the staff does, but a lot of times, people say, "Oh, that's government against us." And so, whereas us, we're all seven independent business people, we could be much more supportive of your decisions. It's a good, it's a good thing. So, we should encourage people to go through it and not necessarily have a charge, although that's up to the Board of Supervisors. But I think you'd see the city is pretty satisfied on it. I mean, I get the weekly agenda for Site Plan Review emailed me a week ahead of time, and so, sometimes I go sit in and listen to what's going on. And I assume you probably would do the same thing with your Site Plan Reviews. People who want to be on that list, you would email them, let them know, and so, believe me, it's a good thing.
It would be a public meeting. It would be a notice public meeting, and the public would be invited to attend. We'd have a distribution list, anybody that wanted to be on it could be added.
Well, it's also interesting to look at the counties that charge developer fees. You know, they went down this road that there is, you know, not going to be a problem down the road because they were generating some good money off that during the boom times. But when the boom ended, they found that they were far more extended than a county like Tulare that didn't have a developer fee. So, I guess, right now, it's probably good to just sit tight on that. I mean, we are, I know we are considering that for the future, but...
Do the cities charge developer fees?
Oh, well, the City of Visalia does not, but the City of Porterville does.
How about Tulare?
I don't know about the City of Tulare.
I don't think Tulare does. Anything else, Ben?
Well, that's it for March 8th. I can move on to the next meeting.
Okay.
Or we can postpone this till the end of the...
I think we're running behind, so I think we'll come back to this at the end of the session. So, we're going to postpone item eight, remainder of item eight A and B, and we will move to item five, which is a timed public hearing. Item five A, GPA 09-003/pz 09004, Peña's Disposal. Accept the negative declaration as the appropriate environmental document and recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve a request from Peña's Disposal Incorporated to amend the Cutler-Rosse Community Plan to change the land use designation of approximately 6.77 acres of an 18.01 acre site from residential reserve to industrial, and the remaining 11.3 acres of the site from industrial reserve to industrial. Also, to change the zoning on the same 18.01 acres from the AE 20 Exclusive Agricultural 20-Acre Minimum Zone to the M1 Light Industrial Zone. The site is located on the northeast corner of Avenue 408 and Road 120, Cutler and Rosse. And our contact today is April Hill. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Chairman Millies and Commissioners. Better acoustics in this room, too.
It's good.
Peña's Disposal, as Chairman Millies was saying, is located on the northeast corner of Avenue 208 and Road 120 near Cutler, about one mile west of State Route 63. Sites within the Cutler-Rosse Urban Development Boundary but outside the redevelopment project area boundary. It's also within the sphere of Cutler Public Utility District, although no service is there. Half-mile from Alta Airport, which has, which was closed some years ago. The project affects an 18-acre parcel and a .6-acre portion of an adjacent parcel that has a drainage basin serving the facility. Zoning on the surrounding land is AE 20 Ag Exclusive 20-Acre Minimum for the west, north, and east. It's M1 to the south and C3 Service Commercial on the southeast. The zone change will enable Peña's to expand to, onto the 6.71-acre portion with a, with permanent use, and there, I have a new use permit in the works to expand the facility. The existing AE 20 zone allows by right all types of ag uses and limited residential uses. Certain other uses need approved special use permits such as solid waste disposal truck facilities, solid waste recycling operations, waste and refuse disposal sites, which is this, this is not, and biomass fuel manufacturer. Proposed M1 Light Manufacturing Zone is intended for assembling and treatment of products other than those that are obnoxious or offensive because of odor, dust, smoke, and noise. Allowed by right in the zone are recycling transfer facilities. The SR overlay is not recommended at this time, partly because of our transfer from site review, and also because the facility exists. Land use designations on this site are, the two-thirds, 11.3 acres are industrial reserve and 6.77 acres are residential reserve. Land to the north is also designated residential reserve, to the east is medium-density residential, south is industrial and quasi-public, to the west is agriculture. There was a general plan amendment in 1994 to change the land use designation of the 11 acres from residential reserve to industrial reserve, but the eastern 6.71 acres remained in residential reserve until it could come out of ag preserve. And for the same reason, the zone change was held up until the ag preserve completed non-renewal, which happened in January 1st, 2003. The general plan initiative preceding this project was approved by the Board on March 11, 2008. Applicant asks the Commission to approve the addition of the .6-acre drainage basin, the dotted line square on the parcel to the north, which was omitted from the GPI in error although recommended in the use permit in 1998. The basin serves only the industrial facility, has an easement, is owned by a, by a Peña family member. It's in ag preserve but is more than halfway through the non-renewal process, and it will be out in 2015. The aerial shows the facility in the center with ag-related uses and residences nearby. Alona Packing and Cutler-Rosse Joint Waters Authority are to the south. Suntree LLC is a nutpacking facility to the west. Alta Irrigation District's Tout Ditch runs along Road 120, so the entrances are all on Avenue 408. There's railroad tracks running diagonally. There's newer residential subdivisions about one half, one-quarter mile north in Rosse and about one-quarter mile east in Cutler. Surroundings are buffered from Peña's by Orchard on the north, exclusive ag zones on the west, manufacturing and commercial zones on the south, and a dedicated future collector street on the right, on the east. There will be other buffers considered in, as conditions and mitigation measures of the upcoming use permit for expansion. The site's in a flood hazard zone A, which requires elevation certificates for structures and other flood avoidance measures. Western 11 acres have been developed as solid waste disposal trucking facility since 1993. Thank you.
April, what other flood avoidance measures are you talking about?
The use permit will put a binder full of mitigation measures. This is the 1998 use permit, and that was, that went through a lengthy process, was finally approved in 2006, and same consultant. And technical studies will be required, traffic impact study, health assessment for air quality, and many more. Since the western, since the site has been in heavy use, not likely habitat for any threatened species. Here are some site photos. Peña's been in business in Tulare County since 1949, and on this site, at least since 1992, when the first use permit was approved. It's first visible, first visible along the Avenue 408 is the office and the material recovery facility. Office was converted from a house. In front of office parking is a wrought iron fence. There's six-foot chain-link fence surrounding the rest of the site. This is approaching from the east and Highway 63. This is Alona Packing across Avenue 408. The landscaping similar to probably what will, what will be proposed for, with the use permit, 2010 use permit that started the works. This is from the west. There's Tout Ditch and the back of the Material Recovery Center facility. This is view from the, from the north through the grove, through the citrus grove, just planted, just making its way, just growing, growing well. Residents in the background is the families, family members. This is a view from the other side, from the residential subdivision quarter-mile to the north. Here's onsite, the Material Recovery Center and Transfer Station. Building has solid walls on the west and about 50 feet of the east, and roll-up doors on the south. Also has a meeting room for community education. More shots, has a maintenance shop, a truck wash, storage buildings. For a zone change, we mostly concern ourselves with the, with the surrounding areas and the impact on the community. This is an elevated construction sorting station, elevated sorting station for construction debris and inert wastes, has an engineered inert tipping pad and green waste piles. All are monitored by Health and Human Services. More pictures of the storage areas, the Recycling Buyback Center. Two basins, this one shows the one on the south on the larger 18-acre parcel. And summary, the negative declaration is based on existing conditions and the mitig- mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for the, and approved in two thousand and six for the, yes, use permit PSP ninety-eight one hundred. It was circulated, our current negative declaration was circulated to the State Clearing House, no comments. And we, that's the packet that was provided this morning for your, for your review. Caltrans sent a, a note requesting the traffic impact study which has been provided for the use permit. Mitigation measures for the use, for the use permit and, as well as conditions of approval will will be included at that time. The Planning Commission acts in an advisory capacity to the Board of Supervisors for zone changes and general plan amendments. Draft pack, draft resolutions are in your packet recommending the Board accept the negative declaration as the appropriate environmental determination to, to approve the general plan amendment. We've also got a draft general plan amendment. And also to approve the zone change and ordinance. One change in the resolutions for both the zone change and the GPA is to add the possibility of development impact fees for future development. That and staff's presentation. Do you have questions for me or for the applicant, Art Peña?
I've never been to one of these. Are there any orders?
When I was out at the site, no. It was, it was quite amazing, even in the covered, even in the covered transfer facility. It's very clean.
I've been to the site several times. It's a very clean operation. They do an outstanding job out there.
You said there's a residence on the parcel? Where's that located?
On the parcel was a residence that was converted to the office.
There is a residence right on the other side of the trees or vines and I-
Right, on the other side of the orchard.
Can I ask, are you, is this going to be more trucks? Since the expansion, is that going to also expand the number of trucks?
Right.
To?
If there's more analysis than I'm able to get into until, till the use permit, we, we know that the tonnage is going to triple and county is looking forward to that contract, has already approved that contract. With efficiencies of, you know, scale, tonnage may increase but not that much truck-
Thank you.
Traffic. Caltrans has asked for fair share, calculating the fair share of road improve, of highway improvements. I believe that our, yeah.
Right.
Contribution onto, for county roads-
I saw that letter, okay.
County roads will ask for the same.
In Henry Dong's letter, he says that a cultural resources analysis should be made in the environmental document to determine if any resources exist especially in the area adjacent to the Tout Ditch.
Right, that's a-
Was that done as a part of this?
Not as part of the, not as part of the general plan amendment zone change. And Tout Ditch, as you can recognize, is a, is a drainage canal now. If it was ever a naturally flowing stream of anything, there's been dredged out by now. It's, it's in a heavily used agricultural area.
Is there any-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Elliott, it should be noted that a typical condition of approval on a use permit would include if a requirement that if anything is found through the excavating or building on the site, they must stop immediately and contact the appropriate-
Yeah, and we're not there yet. We're just doing the negative deck.
Zone change for an existing-
Well, the negative deck should speak to that though, right?
Right, and it does. It does, that we will it's further on in the, in the inch of, inch of-
Well, I think one way that's instructive in doing this, when we're looking at all these, we basically come up against the same thing and it's it's nice to require if anything's found, but, well, I always wondered, do people contact the county or not? Because I know in Three Rivers, we've got several situations where they did not. In fact, they were in Indian burial grounds and they did not. But for this process, I think one thing that's instructive, you have a, a parcel that's been used out here since, what, what did you say, nineteen forty-nine?
Peña's has been in, in business since nineteen forty-nine. The parcel's been used at least since nineteen ninety-two.
Well, I think that it might just behoove us to do a quick check with like Mel's Cutler Orocy historical bunch out there and just maybe say what was the part, what was the parcel used before then? Was there anything ever recorded about that site? And that could be a really succinct statement and placed in the, the document.
If I recall, it was the Wong family had it before and they were close family friends of ours. And I think they converted that house to the, to their office.
What, when did they get to the site?
Passed away in the, probably in the late eighties or nine, early nineties.
Yeah, but I mean, when did they first come to the area?
Wong family?
Yeah.
Probably around nineteen fifty, nineteen forty, they were there before-
Well, that's, that's not a significant issue, but it certainly could be.
We particularly look at places like Three Rivers, anywhere there's a naturally running water course that might be attractive to older people, ancient people.
Chairman and Commissioner Elliott, if I might add, the typical process when a planner's looking at this issue and doing an environmental study, the first place they go to is the, we call it the Environmental Resources Management Element of the general plan. And some of these areas have been predetermined to be highly potent, have a high potential for cultural resources and then other areas not
Right.
on historical record. When a planner sees that something is within that high probability of having something, that's usually when we trigger, we go to Cal State Bakersfield or one of these sources for further, for further review and have their opinion. When it's not located in that, then, then we don't trigger that requirement. That's what, that's what happened in this case. There, there is, but it's that general plan element that, that is, is kind of the guiding document for the issue. If however, we have another reason to believe that there's something there, we're more than happy to go and go through the process.
We also have websites and I've checked with Tulare County Historical Society websites and the state and the, and the feds and so I've compiled it all into a list, say, not up there.
Anything else? Anyone? Thank you, April. At this time, this is a public hearing and I will open the hearing to any public testimony. If the applicant would like to make some comments, you're welcome to do that at this time. If there are any opposition to this program or application, you'll also be given the opportunity. So, do I have the applicant up here?
Yeah, Art Peña, Peña's disposal at one two zero nine four.
Thank you.
Four oh eight. You know, we're requesting the zone change because we're expanding our facility. We recently acquired a contract with Tulare County to process all their construction demolition waste and put another fifteen people to work out there. We're doing seventy percent diversion on that new site, so we're getting some great diversion for the county. The facility, when we purchased, was actually all ag ground. It was all pretty much fallow. People farmed there before. Mr. Wong, as Mel pointed out, was, was owned before us, but I think it's a good project for the county. I think our consultants prepared some, some stuff for us. We're, we're lowering our carbon footprint, I believe, which is what AB thirty-two has, has really been pushing since it passed. So, we think it's a good project. We, we, yeah, we're trying to keep the oranges and, and keep some buffer zones around us. We don't, we don't create any, any nuisances to the residents surrounding the area. And there is no odor actually, as April pointed out. You know, it's garbage coming in to the transfer station, but, you know, we move it in, move it out in a timely manner. It really doesn't, doesn't smell actually. Environmental Health comes out once a month, checks us over really good. And we haven't had no violations since we've been in, in operations. It's pretty much all I had to say unless we have-
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
You're in a flood zone there. Have you had any issues with flooding in the past here since you've been there?
No, we, we haven't. All the buildings were built with elevation certificates as required and we haven't really had any flooding issues. We've got good drainage and the two pond invasions have done a good job actually. And we had some heavy rains this year, so everything's working as it, it was designed. I'm very pleased with that, obviously.
Thank you, sir. I don't think there are any opponents to this in the audience, but if there are, please come forward at this time. No? All right. At, at the discretion of the Chair, I don't think there's any need for a summation. So, if there are any comments, further comments from my fellow commissioners, I'll take those at this time. None? April, would you like to summarize the actions that we are addressing here this morning on this applicant?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the, that the Planning Commission accept the negative declaration as the appropriate environmental determination and move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the recommended general plan amendment proposal and the recommended change of zone and adopt the, the reattached resolutions establishing findings. With the added condition of a possibility, or the actual finding that in development impact fees may be, may be levied on future development.
Do I have a motion to adopt or accept option number one as stated?
I'll move that we accept the negative declaration and recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the, our plan proposal.
Is there a second?
I'd second that. Oh, go ahead, Bill.
Added the-
Mr. Charlie.
But they added possibly the, what levy fee is that? Or fees?
Development fees.
Could we have a second again, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Dong?
Yes.
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
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 Latch?
Yes.
Siano?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, April. You did a lot of work. We will move back to item eight, remaining item eight A. Ben, would you like to finish up on the supervisors' meetings? You have a presentation? Okay.
Chairman, thank you. Members of the Commission. On March fifteenth of the Board of Supervisors meeting, there was an item to transfer RDA assets from the RDA to county's special revenue funds. This is way report. And on March twenty-second, the county made a presentation regarding these development fees. And that item was tabled for sixty to ninety days to work out further details with the, with the council of cities and other interest groups. As far as what else is going on, we are currently, we have, we have lost two planners since we last met. Amy Lazaraga moved on to work for the Lemoore Naval Air Station as a planner, planner. And Jennifer Munn is retired. So, we're down a couple planners. We're not sure how it's going to go as far as filling those positions. We have budget and hiring freeze issues as well as we want to wait and see how things play out with the redevelopment agency and, and other things that might affect those positions, so. We are, however, hiring an animal facilities planner which should be brought on board soon, which will work with our dairy team and help with compliance issues on the dairies as well as work on environmental documents and other, and other dairy projects. So, we're very excited to have, have someone on board to help with that effort. As stated before, we're going to, we're going to be coming before the Planning Commission with a couple of ordinances. One will be regarding non-commercial dog kennels and one will be public work staging areas for road projects. We have a new housing and building manager, Dennis Lehman, who's come over from the city of Visalia after his retirement. And he's taken over the building, the management of the building. Glad to have Dennis on board. I hope we get a chance to meet him soon. The housing element is currently in the hands of the Department, of the California Department of Housing and Community Development. It's being reviewed. And we're anxiously awaiting word back with our fingers crossed. I believe we've addressed all of their issues and so we're, we're looking forward to hearing back from them in the, in the near future. We will be having an Airport Land Use Committee meeting on April twenty-seventh. And also mark your calendars for Friday, May thirteenth. At the Holiday Inn here in Visalia, we're going to have a Planning Commissioners Workshop. This started out as, as a training session just for this group. We thought about having a, just a general training session. And then we discussed it further and we've opened it up to other county planning commissions and now we've opened it to other counties and cities, planning commissions throughout the South Valley. And the, our local chapter, the American Plant Association is going to sponsor the event. And so, by now you should have gotten a flyer. We'll keep sending those out and keeping you updated on that event, but hopefully you're able to attend.
Have you had much response from the other counties?
Have. I couldn't give you the exact numbers. Fred Bruselas has that, but the first day the flyer went out, we started to get calls in, so.
That's a great idea.
If it, if it go, if it's successful, we'll just make it an annual event and do it every year.
Now, do we have to, that's got to be a meeting then, huh? Is that a Planning Commission meeting?
For Brown Act is-
We'll have it here. You know we're going to have it.
It'll be at the Holiday Inn.
Oh, sorry.
And we'll invite other planning commissions to, to do the noticing that they need as well if that's the issue, if that's the case.
They're responsible for their own noticing is what you're saying, right?
Pretty much all I have as far as update. Be happy to answer any questions and if-
Ben, is there a, a Planning Director update or is that it?
That was it, except I do have one more item.
Okay. You want to move into that? Okay.
This is, we're, we're trying to anticipate the, the future with Yoko Ranch and the general plan coming up. We know these are going to be, these are big, very big planning projects. They're the biggest planning projects. And we anticipate significant turnout and meetings. There, there may be heated debates. There may be a lot of issues brought before this group as well as the Board of Supervisors. And what we want to do is just do a, a fresher course on meetings themselves. And we want to, we're not, we're not accusing anybody of doing bad meetings, but we want to make sure we do a good job of, of running good and successful meetings. And so, we, what you see here is part one of a, of a few, of some training on conducting meetings where, especially where you might have a lot of controversy or-
Well, you know, if you had more meetings, the Chair would have more experience.
We're working, we are working on that. Site Planner View Committee being gone. More items for you guys. What we have here are just a few pointers and just the basic overview. Reminder that meetings are the, the window that the public gets to see the government in action and sometimes the only window that they get to see the government in action, so they're especially important. Public perception is often formed by how well meetings are conducted and therefore, fair and respectful treatment of everybody regardless of their opinion. How to prepare for a meeting? Read the entire agenda packet prior to the meeting, including all of the environmental documents. Ask staff any clarifying questions that you may need before the meeting. But be sure that if, when doing so, that we're only addressing ambiguities in the reports and not necessarily talking about what might affect your decision on the project.
One thing I want to ask, Ben, while you're on that topic, and we've talked about it in the past, how are we coming on automating the templates for us as commissioners to use? Because I think that's going to be a big deal when we start moving through a lot of data. It's been very difficult, you know, and, and we understand it's, it's a new process trying to convert over to using laptops, but if we're going to use them and we're going to use them in these very complicated meetings, then I hope that we have a little more simplistic approach to the templates. I mean, we can read all the data before, but when, when, when we're in the meetings and we have to refer to something, it's been a little bit
cumbersome.
cumbersome. Cumbersome to, to find something, so, uh, I hope you can work on that while we're getting ready for this. Okay?
Yeah, the general plan comes to mind, and we need some bookmarks on that so we can go right online and get it, you know, when we are bouncing around in certain sections.
Yes, we've talked about this in, before, uh, Mr. Chairman, and we've, we've launched an effort with our IT staff to work on this. Um, I think we understand what you're looking for in, in links. You can, you can go to chapters or items...
Yeah, just do the hyperlinks.
Without having to scroll through an entire project, and so we're looking at how we might carve that out. Believe it or not, we have some very lengthy, have very lengthy meetings with our IT staff on how to do this, not just on, on your reports, but on all of our files and documents. The level of technical detail is, is beyond my ability to comprehend, but, but we have good people that know how to do it. Um, when, whenever there's an abstention or disqualification, you should abstain or disqualify yourself if you have potentially conflicting loyalties that are not otherwise addressed by law. The law dictates that, uh, that you must recuse yourself, uh, for certain items, but, but what this is saying is even if there's other things where there's any potential perception of, of that, of, uh, some kind of impropriety or, or influence or, or affect you financially, um, that you should al- it's better to be safe than sorry. And I, I think everybody here is pretty good about doing that, but just as a reminder, um, an example might be if you're, if you have a relative, if, uh, of an applicant who's doing a project, it'd be best just to step out, even if you don't have any financial association with it or, or legal requirement to step out. Just keep that in mind. Um, how do you abstain? You publicly identify the financial interests or potential conflict of interest in sufficient detail to be understood by the public. Uh, you refrain from discussing or voting on the matter, and you leave the room until after the discussion, vote, and any other disposition of the matter, unless it is on the consent calendar.
Ben, are then, uh, we prohibited then from acting as a private citizen if it's a relative of yours and making testimony?
Again, this, this isn't so much as, as what you're legally required to do, but it, it's just best practice, because it, it, it can come back to bite the commission or us in some way, uh, even if there's the, just the appearance that, that you were somehow influential in it. Um, the best thing to do in, in these matters is you just step out of the room and, and let it, let it unfold without, uh, it's important not to say anything as you're walking out. I, I've never seen anybody actually yell out to vote for or anything like that, but... But it's, uh, again, it comes down to a question of whether or not you should participate its best not to.
Or you can ask county council ahead of time.
Correct.
So you shouldn't let your political leanings interfere here? I'm sorry.
Uh, just a reminder, duty to decide, um, what if the law allows you to vote, but you would prefer not to? It could be tempting to abstain when you know a decision will be unpopular, or when you simply do not know what the right decision is. However, you are, you were appointed to make tough decisions. It's unfair to let your fellow commissioners take the heat for a necessary but unpopular decision. Instead, you should come to meetings fully prepared and ready to explain your decision. Again, we've never seen this happen with this group, but just a reminder, um, we got some really difficult decisions coming up, and so we look forward to, uh, your input and, and help on, on coming to the right conclusions on those. I think that's all we have today. Oh, no, I said I've more. Um, just a couple pointers on how to get the most out of public meetings. Um, sit notices way in advance, that's more, uh, a, a nugget for staff than, than the commission. Um, accessibility, make sure it's at a convenient loca- location and ADA, ADA accessible, uh, American with Disabilities Act accessible. And we're already, that's one of the reasons we're having it at this facility now, is to improve the accessibility and, uh, and having proper space and, and a setting. Make sure the room size is sufficient for the expected audience, and place additional copies near the entrance of the room of all reading materials, and we have some now here sitting on this stand, and we may continue to put them here or some other places as we go through these larger meetings. Um, make sure there are procedural explanations for those who are unfamiliar with the procedure. Some may not know what the procedure is for, uh, a use permit, and, uh, and so it's for the benefit of the public to make sure we explain those with, as staff or as the planning commission. Um, we have the option of using speaker slips if we want. We may consider that, especially during these larger meetings, where people can submit in advance or at the beginning of the meeting, uh, their name and the fact of the item they wanna comment on, so it would help the, uh, the chairperson organize these comments and be, and be able to anticipate what's gonna happen. It's not required, but it's, it's one idea. Make sure we test in advance all of our audio visual, and it seems to be working very good in this room. I've never seen, uh, I haven't seen many problems here. Logistics, ensure working condition of other items and materials used, and address any special needs, and make sure we always start the meeting on time. So that's it, that's part one. We'll, we'll continue, um, to provide, we have a lot of training materials to, to share, and maybe at each meeting I'll, I'll share a few of these.
You were working on, uh, a manual, right, for, for planning commissioners?
Yes, we are.
How's that coming?
Not quite ready. We've, we've made progress on it. Um, it'll have things like this in it, um, but we hope, uh, my, my hope is to have it ready by the, by the start of the next fiscal year, when we, when we really launch, uh, the new duties with the abolishing of the site planning review committee and have a formal training. We also may reveal some of it at our planning commissioner workshop, but we're gonna let that be a surprise for those who are...
Um, I had a question about, you know, since we're in this facility, and I know they stream the Supes meetings on the internet, are we ever planning to do that for planning commission? 'Cause that might be helpful during the Yoko stuff and that sort of thing.
Question, I don't know if that's been discussed. I might ask our director to comment on, on his thoughts.
Yes, sir.
Jake Raper, Director of RMA. Um, again, we don't have that capability, technical capability yet, because we have to buy the license in order to do that audio streaming. If the item is approved in the budget and we're allowed to, uh, purchase that licensing, and then that certainly would be available, not all the planning commission meetings, and so...
Sounds good. Good question. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman? I, I'm almost the oldest one on the board, and that's not necessarily...
What do you mean?
I'm almost as old as you, but, well, I wasn't gonna say that. I had a little trouble reading the screens, I wonder if we could darken the room up a little bit? They were like, a little bit hazy, the, the PowerPoint.
And did, would darkening the room help?
I don't know what happened, but anyway, it just looked a little fuzzy. This is clear, but I'm just saying, see, that's perfect.
That's good. Very good.
Yeah, when, when the board does theirs, I mean, it's, again, it's a good, good comment, good observation. Uh, when we do slide presentations, the, the clerk, the, the planning commission secretary needs to actually dim the lights where you can see the, uh, present visual.
Great, thank you.
The photos were a little washed out on this one here. I found myself looking over here, but...
Yeah. Well, I noticed also, on when we were doing the matter we had this morning, I brought it up on Google Earth on the connection, and boy, it really helped, 'cause it just, you could zero right in on your own computer, so you can, in the future, we'll probably have that on a zip drive, right? The same stuff?
Well, we'll either be on a zip drive or it'll be on the, the web, where you can just download it onto your laptops.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, you look at it on your own screen, too, if that helps, so...
And as somebody asked earlier today about, uh, your hyperlinks, I know Maria's been working with IT, trying to get that organized and move that forward, and so, um, I'm, you do you have a status report on that, where we're at?
Uh, I have met with IT last week, so if everything goes good, we will be able to have everything on the website by the first meeting in April.
Excellent.
We're also working on tabs, but, you know, it's a long process, as long as we can get it on the website by April, I think that's a big step for us.
Very good, yeah, very good, good.
We do have an agenda for the first meeting in April, Mr. Chair?
We do, uh, but I wanna finish off. Are there any other, uh, planning commission, commissioners' comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to comment that Miss, uh, Commissioner Norman just shared his, uh, letterhead with me, and I've been deleted from it, and I just didn't know if someone hadn't told me that I was taken off of the commission.
Oh, is that right?
Always the last to know.
So noted.
Always the last to know.
Commissioner Patiglioneau? Okay.
Well, you're on the, the blue sheet.
Yeah, you're on the blue sheet.
Yeah, just...
And I kept looking at even numbers, and I thought, wait a second.
I think we can correct that.
Are there any other items, uh, for future agendas that anyone would like to bring up?
I just wanna remind everybody, before you run off, I need a, the planning commission down front here, we're gonna do a photo for the, the public's benefit.
Can we get, uh, from further back, the one up here, and then maybe a concentrated one? I don't know.
Well, I'd like to do the group one here, so I can identify the different people. The thing about doing too far back is the same reason why we're, it's getting hard to use, being used to people too far out. But for the photo purpose, I'd just like to have us down here, if we could, and then we can have this in the back.
Right.
And, uh, everyone will know where we are then.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one more additional item. Um, as you know, the state of California is looking at a number of legislative acts to, um, bolster their budget, but it, uh, affect the county's, um, uh, budgeting program or subventions received. One of the proposals by the governor is the elimination of any subvention to, uh, the ci- the counties relating to the Williamson Act, uh, program. Uh, the board of supervisors has asked us to place it on, uh, as a subject matter to the ag advisory committee to identify what the concern is relating to the potential elimination of the subventions from the state on the Williamson Act contract. Uh, the board is desirous to begin open dialogue and discussions with the agricultural industry about creating a local program, and that the locals could have more control rather than depending upon the state. Uh, potentially, there's some legislation that may occur to give that authority to local agencies, uh, to enter into different kind of, uh, agreements and contracts relating to, uh, agricultural land preservation. Uh, it basically shifts the potential financing, property tax, revenue, whatever the ca- whatever we can come up with to offset that loss of, uh, revenue, uh, to the general fund. So the next agricultural advisory committee, that, uh, subject item will be, uh, at the, uh, their committee meeting. A member of the board will be going to the Farm Bureau and start opening up that dialogue as well, uh, to start, uh, preparing for discussions, uh, should the state take that final action and do that, so... Um, so if you, we'll keep you abreast of that as we go through, but it's very important. We keep a, keep telling everybody, and, and we're trying to reflect our programs, to identify how important agricultural activities are in Tulare County. And so we want to look at various programs. We've talked about doing some specialty training for staff that can be basically facilitators for ag industry when they come in, uh, to the permit center, to assist them in, in their efforts. If we have a billion-dollar industry in our county, we certainly wanna provide some specialized services to that. That's why we're doing an animal facility planner, uh, because of the mil- the, the milk industry in the, in the county is so very large, and so we need to provide additional services to those specialized industries, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that as well. That'll be coming down, and, um, and so you'll hear more dialogue on that as well.
Big question on your animal facilities planner, what kind of, uh, qualifications and experience do you expect for some, from someone like that?
What, you wanna apply?
No. I got, I got enough jobs, I got enough from the dairies.
The, um, uh, basically, it's, it's a degreed, uh, position, uh, um, ability to get certain certifications in a certain period of time, as well as environmental, uh, some environmental knowledge, as well as project review processing. Basically, a senior kind of person that has, uh, more experience than a intern, planning intern, or of that nature. And we wanted to specialize it in terms of a job description, because, uh, again, it is, it is a, um, uh, basically millions of dollars of an industry, uh, that we want to have that person to be able to develop a positive relationship with the dairyman when they go out, the dairy businesses when they go out, because it is, um, uh, in, to ensure that they comply with their conditions on their use permits, if they have environmental mitigation issues, that they want to make sure they monitor that. Uh, also, the, the cow count, to make sure they stay within their parameters of permitted activities. And so that individual, uh, as we see it at this point, will be both doing, uh, the compliance, you know, making contact with the individual businesses, uh, working with the EIRs that, that they're coming in now, and processing those, looking at the use permits and making sure that the conditions are complied with, and, um, and actually assisting, right now, we're updating the animal facilities confinement plan and help get that person involved in that process as well, because they'll be working and utilizing that tool down the road. So, uh, that's, um, that's what we see that individual doing, so...
Jake, what do you think? We'll start having some hearings on the general plan?
Well, we're, I was hoping, uh, in June, and it still may occur in June, it may be a little bit after that. Uh, I know the general plan, uh, unit, the team, is finalizing responses to all the comments received, uh, and they're pretty close to that, uh, being completed. Once that is done, that is turned over to the environmental consultant for their final review, and then we begin doing our staff, uh, reports and, uh, findings for the environmental document. We're hoping to have a workshop, uh, in June, I think, between planning commission and the board, but Ben, we can give, uh, have Ben to give you a status report each planning commission, and if the timelines change or modify, we can share that with you. We will get the documents out to you, uh, at least one or two days before the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my question.
They're, they're pretty extensive, uh, but we'll get that out, and basically, the intent of the workshop is really to go through those products as well, to help you get familiar with them, uh, and that way you won't feel so lost with, in reviewing, reviewing the documents. And it's our hope after the workshop that we can have a public hearing relatively soon after that, uh, with the planning commission, and what we're anticipating is like a two or three-day, uh, public meeting, uh, and not more than, you know, uh, four to six hours a day, taking the break after every hour, because that kind of concentration is gonna be very, um, strenuous, you're gonna receive a lot of information from, not only from staff, but the, uh, the county's consultants, and then you'll be receiving a lot of information from the public as well. And so we'll, we'll, we'll set it up where you can take a break, stretch your legs, clear your, clear your minds, go in the back room, have a cup of coffee, use the restroom, whatever you need to do, but, you know, that's the strategy that we're looking at at this point. And we'll certainly advise you well in advance when those are, and where you can block out your work schedules and making sure that, uh, you're not gonna have any conflicts with that. And, uh, again, it may be two or three days, but, uh, we may not make it consecutive days. We may say one day, then skip a day and come back, uh, a next day, just where you can have a breather, but, you know, we'll play it by ear and find out how you guys, uh, feel more comfortable in, in doing that public hearing, so...
If you're gonna do it in, uh, June or July, uh, maybe, uh, Maria or Carrie could send out a notice to, so that you guys kinda have an idea if there's times that we're not gonna be available, this is like vacation, graduation time.
Now, we'll, we'll start working on that schedule as we get closer to the final product and start tying down the timelines. We'll certainly give you as much advance notice as we possibly can, we'll get the documents out to you as early as possible as well. So once they go out to you, they go out to everybody, so make available to...
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, this commission will reconvene on April thirteenth, 2011, at nine AM in these chambers, and this meeting is adjourned.